Okay. Ready, Jesse?
Awesome.
Okay. Those wishing to address the board during the public comment agenda, item four point zero two must turn in a public comment form before the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any forms submitted after the session has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. It is 5:02 PM on Monday, January eighth, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpus, Director Barnes, Director Campbell, Director Ed Scorn, student representatives Laura Wittenberg and Sophia Willett, Superintendent Sean Woodward, district leadership team, school district staff, as well as members of the community. Director Whitfield will not be in attendance for this evening's meeting. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these matters, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to set the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Okay. Moving on to agenda item two point zero five is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated January eighth, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated January eighth, 2024. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda has item, or the agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item three point zero one, Certified Employee of the Month for November. Holly, would you like to? Sorry, Director Barnes.
It's fine. Okay, so our Certified Employee of the Month that we didn't get to read off at our December meeting because she had not been notified yet is Ms. Rachel Sullivan. She is a multilingual facilitator and instructional coach at Frank Wagner Elementary. Rachel is a strong voice for our multi-language learners and more than just a voice. She works tirelessly to both advocate for MLL students and to better equip teachers with the tools and strategies they need to ensure that the lean, the learning needs of all students are met. Rachel has helped me implement best practices, shown me countless resources, modeled strong instructional strategies, and pushed me to learn and grow in ways that directly empower and support my students. Rachel's always learning and growing. It seems like every day you will hear her say, I just listened to the best podcast on reading, or I just started a great new book on reading strategies. I'm grateful that her role allows her to work so closely with me, working together with the goal to learn and grow together with the intention of positively impacting student learning for all students. Thank you, Rachel, so much for all that you do for our students and for making Frank Wagner a better place.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you, Director Barnes. Okay, moving on to agenda item four point zero one, Student Representative. We have Laura and Sophia. Who'd like to go first?
Okay. That cost them. Is that good? Okay. Um, so, starting with the, with the events that are coming up this month, we have homesteading day next week, I believe, January sixteenth. So there's no classes that day, and we're just learning about homesteading. So that'll be fun. And then we have talent show auditions on January seventeenth, and the ACT spaghetti feed funders are on January eighteenth, and then the Midwinter Ball on January nineteenth. Um, I will be highlighting the Montessori program today. Um, so this is, there's three separate groups. There's early Montessori, which is, I think, kindergarten through third, and then elementary Montessori, which is fourth to eighth, I believe, and then adolescent Montessori is high school. Um, so early Montessori provides students with experiences in sensory, practical life, language, mathematics, science and culture, fine arts, and peace education. Early Montessori curriculum branches from the five great stories, the creation of, the creation of the universe, coming to life from earth, the coming of humans, the story of language, and the story of mathematics. And then adolescent Montessori, students work together with their peers and teachers to explore intellectual and hands-on learning projects encompass the humanities, science, art, and vocational experiences. Um, so I think that this program is really cool because one of my, both my brothers are in it, both my little brothers. But in the practical life, they like pull laundry and like do cleaning sometimes. And one time I was like walking to a different class and I saw my brother walk by with like a big camper of laundry. It was really cute, but yeah, that program is really cool.
Hi. Okay, I was just gonna talk about how last week, coming back from break, and then this week, all in the week. So last week was happiness week to spread happiness from coming back from winter break because kids are usually kind of sad coming back. And then all the grades had an assembly hosted by Mr. Willie, just to make sure we're all on the same page after break. And then today, Link Crew did a presentation on Martha Luther King for the ninth graders. Um, and then we also have Unity Week this week, just to bring the school together. So one thing A S B did today was give out little notes so people could share their gratitude to students or staff, and then it would be sent to them. And then A S B will also be hosting Martha Luther King Assembly Wednesday.
Any questions?
What was your favorite part of winter break?
I just liked being able to sleep in and, yeah, go to bed late, too. And then, um, I went to seaside and I really missed the beach, so that was really enjoyable.
Awesome. Thank you both for your reports. Okay, moving on to agenda item four point zero two, Public Comment. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to the public comments during the business meeting. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As the board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If attending the meeting virtually, please join as panelists, allow video, and unmute your microphone. It looks like we have one group tonight. Erin? Hi, Erin. Hi, can I have you share your full name and your relationship to the school district? Nice. Awesome.
Got it. How's this? Okay. My name is Erin. Like I said, I'm a dad, and I was looking at a report card on the OSPI website, and I saw that fifty-seven percent of our students did not meet standards, which is a very polite way of saying that fifty-seven percent of our students are failing. And it's not that just, it's not that they're just missing a question or two on a math test. Students are grade levels behind, and that gap only grows year after year. A person could look at this disparity between those that are successful and those that are failing and think, gee, after all this time and effort, how are we failing so miserably to implement equity? And I would say we aren't. We aren't failing at all. We are actually succeeding. Fifty-seven percent of our students are currently experiencing the overwhelming success of our effort to create equitable outcomes, and I'll explain. Equity was sold to us as a five-foot fence, right? And on one side of this fence, you have a six-foot person, a four-foot person, and a three-foot person. And only one can see over the fence. So how do we fix it? Well, we build platforms. We build a two-foot platform under the four-foot person and a three-foot platform under the three-foot person, and now everyone can see at six feet, and everyone can see over the fence. We were told that if we endeavor to install equity, eventually everyone would be able to see over the fence, and it sounds wonderful. But it's a lie. And because we don't see these results of everyone seeing over the fence, we think we're failing, and we have to pour more time, more effort. And yet, we never see the desired outcome. And so we don't understand how successful we really are. Because equity has another mode, and it works like this. Remember the fence? Instead of building platforms under the two people that couldn't see over the fence, we instead dig holes. We dig a three-foot hole under the six-foot person and a two-foot hole, or I'm sorry, a one-foot hole under the four-foot person. Now everyone is at least three feet, and no one can see over the fence equally. Fifty-seven percent of our students are failing equally. They cannot see over the fence. Equality, equity in its true form is achieved. So you might ask, who's digging the holes? Well, it's really us. It's we as a society. We're doing it. In our classrooms, we allow disruptive school attendees, many of whom spend their days screaming at the top of their lungs, barking like dogs, rolling on the floor, throwing desks and chairs and other items. They yell obscenities, they make pornographic noises, they salt other students and the staff, and their behavior emboldens other students to follow their example, making classroom and building management a nightmare, if not a suicide mission. Let me ask you, would you accept that kind of behavior here in this meeting? Would you accept that kind of behavior in a movie, at work, at a library? The answer is obviously no. But in the classroom, not only do we accept this disruptive and abusive behavior, we give the disruptive school attendee an exemption, or as I like to call it, a license to abuse. We do not remove them from the classroom. Instead, we push them back into the classroom under the guise of equity to the detriment of all. And let's be perfectly clear, this is institutionalized child abuse. We are sanctioning child-on-child abuse and creating a hostile work environment for our teachers, a hostile and abusive learning environment for our children, and it's not fair. It's not fair to the student that wants to learn, but it's having their educational opportunity stolen. It's not fair from the teacher that wants to teach, but has to spend their time, excuse, managing behaviors. It's not fair to the taxpayer who pays for all of it, and it's not fair to the disruptive school attendee who needs the type of help a classroom simply cannot offer. And it's just not fair, I'm sorry, it, it is just not fair, but oddly enough, it's equitable. The data is in. The experiment was a success, but not as we imagined. The law of whole states, that when you find yourself in a hole, stop digging. Equity is equal failure. It is a hole we dug, and it's time to stop digging. It's time to move past this experiment and return to educating our children before we leave an entire generation in forced ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, agenda five point zero one, Consideration of Revisions to Policy fourteen forty. This is the second reading, and Superintendent Woodward will be guiding us through the WASTA recommended changes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So let's see, we'll start with fourteen forty in regards to minutes. There was really, there wasn't much discussion on this particular policy adjustment outside of page two. When it comes to unofficial minutes being available for people to, to review, James asked about where those would be housed, and so we put in there that the unofficial minutes will be uploaded on Board Docs since that, that is what we use prior to the following meeting. Uh, and that was the only adjustment we made to that recommended policy based on the feedback.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the revisions made to Policy fourteen forty.
Is there a second?
I said.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Agenda item has passed four to zero. Consideration of Revisions to Policy fourteen hundred, meaning Conduct Order of Business at Quorum. This is also the second reading, and we will hand it over to Superintendent Woodward.
All right. Uh, so you all landed on option, I can't remember if it was A or B, was it option, option A? Uh, basically gave you more flexibility, uh, just in case you needed to hold a meeting remotely, so that, uh, adjustment was made there. And then also, there was, um, some feedback and some dialogue about written comments. And we are current practice in regards to written comments is that uh, they must be received by noon the day of the board meeting, and the recommended policy said twenty-four hours. So, uh, we struck that out and put our current practice into the policy, so by noon. And then we also thought it was important, Holly and I talked today about, the last section of that policy talked about meeting recordings, and it says effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. That last, I think it's the last paragraph on the recommended policy, that we would start recording all of those meetings. We would just strike that effective and just say all regular and special meetings there. It's something that we currently already do anyhow, but everyone will be required to do it moving forward. And then one other piece that was in there that we had got some feedback on was uh, the limiting of, of public comment during a meeting there. I don't know if you, you, there wasn't much discussion about that, but we, we struck that since that's not part of our current practice. You haven't done that in the past, and you haven't seen a need for that, so, uh, I think it's ready to go.
Thank you, Superintendent Woodward. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the revisions made to Policy fourteen hundred.
Was there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the revisions made to Policy fourteen hundred. Discussion?
Just one quick comment. I, one, Mr. Woodward, I appreciate striking the effective word out there because I thought, well, we're already doing this. Why is that? Why do we even need to have that? But then also the language to keep it the least restrictive was really appreciative. I think just, that was my big concern was if we're making things un, un, unnecessarily restrictive in policy, sometimes we tire our hands. And, uh, and then also the taking out the twenty-four hours to the noon because we already do that, and that just gives our community more time to get information into us as well, and we're obviously able to handle that. So those are the things I was just excited to see maintained in that revision. Thank you.
And after looking at other school districts as well that require a day to even more in advance of providing notice, I'm very glad that we keep ourselves accessible in that way and, um, more open to public comment, so I appreciate that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly, for making those updates. Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item five point zero three, Consideration of Policy twenty-two thirty, Transition to Kindergarten Program. This is the first reading. Chief Student Services Office Officer David Perator will be discussing the WASTA recommended policy. Hey, David.
Happy New Year. And this will be pretty quick, and our district's been operating transition to kindergarten programs. Uh, this is our third year. Uh, we've had the classroom at Frylands, um, two previous years, and then this third year, we were able to successfully open up a, a, a transition to kindergarten classroom at Frank Wagner. We had the students to do that, and I'm happy to say both of the programs are at capacity, so, um, we're meeting the needs of thirty-six students that previously wouldn't have had preschool opportunities. The, the board policy that's listed here that you're reviewing is essentially it's formalizing the parameters around qualifications and, and just some of the parameters for how students are selected for transition to kindergarten and just some of those overall parameters. So the good news is, when I cross-reference what we have listed on our district website, and what we've been doing as practice for the last three years is, is in compliance with, with, with the policy. And so, um, we've been following O S P I's guidance, um, the last three years for, for the, um, transition to kindergarten program. And so essentially the qualifications is around a screening, um, with a certain criteria that students, um, need to meet, um, to be considered for, um, transition to kindergarten, and then they will do, um, based on the number of students that are being screened, they rank order so that the students who have the highest level of need would be identified, um, for, for those slots. Some of the, just the overall qualifying criteria, um, is around, students need to show, uh, they have to all be four years old. Um, so basically they're, they're last year preschool before going into kindergarten. But to show, uh, uh, needing at least one of the following areas, academics, emotions, academics, emotional social development, finding gross motor skills, or language development. They also have to lack access to a licensed preschool opportunity due to availability or funding, um, um, circumstances. They qualify for free and reduced price meals, um, or they qualify for bilingual services, so need to be one of those criteria to be considered for, for the programming. Overall, again, the, the policy that you know you're reviewing and formalizing is in alignment with what we've been doing, so it's, it gets a pretty straightforward, um, policy. It's easier one for me than I think the wellness one.
David, a quick question for you. One of the questions I had in the wording was in the second paragraph versus the district named Lender co-located transition to kindergarten program with other early learning programs. I like that we have the option to do something like that. What does that look like if we ever needed to do something like that? Can you explain that to me?
Well, and some of it, um, like our, our transition to kindergarten program that's at Frylands Elementary, so we also have our developmental preschool, um, programs there. And so, um, some of those students also get some opportunities. Um, it's building out those inclusive practices for preschool, um, students, so they're able to, um, benefit from, from those pieces. Um, we have a certain number of slots that you're allowed to have for students with, with disabilities, um, to keep the right, um, makeup of the classroom. So, so our students with, um, with I E Ps as preschoolers are also able to benefit from both of those programs.
My second question I had was about funding with that as well, and it's basically a net neutral as well because whatever we're submitting and then we, uh, whether they qualify for MLL services, support services, or free and reduced lunch, that goes under the state, and then that funding basically is in and out for the program, correct?
Yeah, essentially.
And then the, the last thing was, uh, for Mr. Woodward, for us last year, I know with you onboarding, uh, at the end of the school year and trying to get ahead of the curve for that, is this something that we're looking at trying to get ahead of earlier this year so that we're able to kind of maybe have, because we looked at the, the need possibly of having more classrooms. We, I think we filled the second classroom pretty quickly, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think your timing is good. Brendan and I talked about it today. There's still some question if the state's going to continue to fund the, the model the way they are currently. If they do, we, we would definitely be wanting to add a third. David and I talked today, we, we think the, uh, there's, the need is there to have three classrooms, so yes.
Okay. And what was the timeline look like? And that may depend on the funding question, but what does the timeline look like for us for building that out so that parents can know in advance and we can get that information to them? Is that where we start? Now, March, April?
Probably February-ish to March, you know, we'll, we'll slow play it as long as we can to make sure that we have the funding for it. But in previous districts, we started really pounding the pavement around February.
Okay.
And then that's when we've done our screenings, we, we, we advertise and then get, and then we screen and, and notify families, um, usually before we go out on summer break.
Okay. Sorry, one question's leading to the next, and that's part of it, too. Um, so is there a forecast on the timeline that the state is going to be able to have that information available for schools? To March? Yeah. Right. Yeah, so expire September twenty-four, but we're asking about a twenty-four, twenty-five school year issue, so. Okay. Okay. The next budget. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, David. Thank you, Sean.
Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick. So I thought you mentioned, Sean, that we could get, um, there's more funding available to what we're using. So can we get a fourth classroom, a fifth classroom? Like, what's the limit?
Originally, this was set up to allow school districts to have classrooms that reflected the need of the community, so, it was based on that. So you just run these kind of child find processes where you just fill up as many classrooms as, as you, as you could. But this last year to year and a half, there's been some concern that the funding was going to get pulled, and they were very wishy-washy on it. So, uh, hoping we'll get a more definitive answer so we could just fill as many as we need to fill.
So there's potential for more than three for this coming summer?
Yeah, if they, if they're, if they're willing to fund the seats, then we're definitely willing to do it. And then a future conversation would be, I mean, it's an amazing early intervention, and the gentleman brought up student learning. Uh, this is an example of, uh, it is an equitable practice where it's like, all right, we have students that can use additional support, and if we give them that support without taking from others is the idea. Uh, they're, they're more ready for kindergarten and first grade, and we can close those gaps. So a lot of districts before- a lot of districts before there was such a thing as transition to kindergarten were running their own because they were spending less dollars if they were intervening earlier. So I think it's a bigger conversation for us to have as well later.
Okay, and then I guess along the same lines, do we have an idea of what the demand is this coming year?
We don't don't really know because we're talking about four-year-olds. So so but it's a great question and I'm not sure what kind of process you ran for your first.
Yeah, and and previous years we've had more students applying screen than we had spots for. And so when we first had just the one classroom, we had a limited, just be based on numbers. When we were able to open up that second classroom, we didn't make a determination until August that we wanted to do that and we were able to fill that and you know, and kudos to the Frank Wagner team and and facilities and everybody pulling together because we were able to pull off identifying and opening a classroom within a couple of weeks. But the need the need was there. And so it's going to be varied from year to year, especially in a community our size. But I would anticipate, especially with good marketing and that we would, once we get the the word out, a lot of families want those preschool services that just can't afford them and having that opportunity also at the school communities where they're going to be going to school just allows them to to build those learning behaviors as four-year-olds. So when they enter kindergarten, they're they're ready, they they understand school processes and classroom routines.
Yeah, that was that was my next question. It mentions recruitment there at the top, eligibility recruitment and enrollment, but there's nothing about recruitment in the policy. Are you going to be adding something to it? Along those same, what you were just talking about, marketing or getting the word out type of strategy.
I think David, if I may, that would be part of our administrative procedure that will build out the policies, you know, what and then the how is the procedure, what what are our steps? And so we still have to build that out. I don't know if WASD had a recommended procedure.
Haven't seen the model of procedures. So that would be something that that'd be a project that we can we could take on and bring to you.
Yeah, it sounded like the demand is there and I agree. It's very important to fill this need.
Thank you, David. This is really exciting. Meeting early childhood education is really exciting. I have a child who benefited greatly from this and so by the time he was in third grade reading at grade level, doing all the things. And so we were able to set him up to succeed in school. And so this is really exciting. I currently have another family member who's in the transition kindergarten program and has loved it. And again, another has set her up to succeed. So just thank you. I look forward to hearing more about this. I know that we've been diving into a lot of strategic planning stuff and and then facilities and safety and security. And so I'm really eager to start having more conversations around this. So this policy is really exciting. Yeah, any questions? Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah, if you ever want to get put into a good mood, go go observe a
Thank you, David. Okay. Moving on, moving on to Agenda Item six point zero eight, approval of the consent agenda. There's a motion. That's first reading. Six point zero eight, is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the consent agenda dated January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the consent agenda dated January eighth, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda Item seven point zero one, Superintendent update, Superintendent Woodward.
All right, just a short update this evening. And Jesse's going to throw a presentation up there, just three slides. The first one is we're seeing continued growth in the area of students attending school on a regular basis. So that's great news. So you can see up there that for the month of December, we had about a a four percent increase overall as compared to last December. I really, and this has been true every month, so I appreciate all the proactive communication going out as well as reminding people, hey, it's important to attend school regularly and we we want you to stay home when you're ill as well. So with that consistent messaging and working really closely with a lot of our kids and families, we're making a difference. I'm glad student learning came up tonight in the public comment because that is what we're here to do, ensure high levels of learning for all kids and not just some. So we do believe this is one of the root causes of of not not the root cause, but one of the issues why kids aren't learning at as high of a level as they as we think they can, they need to come to school. So this is a a good thing that we can monitor every month and we're we're trying different strategies and we've tried before and it's bearing fruit. We expect the same thing to happen with student student learning. The next slide is basically the updated timeline for completing our strategic plan. So it's actually some real meat to it this time. By February twentieth, we'll have our draft strategic plan. We we I talked with the communications team and they had a great idea. They had said, hey, we ought to run focus groups, push the draft out to our community. Let people give written feedback if they want and then run focus groups for staff, students and community again. Small groups present, hey, here's what, here's there's our plan. What do you think? And and make some adjustments based on that feedback. By March twenty-fifth, that board meeting will present the draft to the board. And then by the next board meeting, and it just happens to be tax day on the on 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 that board meeting. That's when hopefully we'll adopt our strategic plan. The one thing that I haven't spent much time talking about, but it will will spend time probably in a workshop doing this. Our plan will have an associated scorecard with learning metrics tied to that with real goals, you know, five-year goals. Six-month goals, you know, and everything in between. So that you as a board, what we haven't got to do a lot together is monitor student learning progress. We've got to build out our assessment systems in such a way that we can be fluid and make adjustments based on the 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 feedback our students are giving us through formative and some of the assessment. We we're missing some things there as a as a system. We have them at the school level and it's hit and miss depending on what school and what grade. But lots more to come with that, but I just want to remind you, we've got our strategic plan. And then we'll be building out an associated scorecard as well. So that's the the timeline for that. And finally, I, any questions on that? Sorry. Last thing is that I want to share one of the, remember our strategic plan will have target objectives for each of the priority areas. And for our college and career readiness strand, we have an interest in developing a Monroe School District either a profile or a portrait of a graduate. This one is the Washington State Board of Education. They're the ones who set graduation requirements as you're as you're aware. They have a a their own profile that they develop based on input for the state of Washington. They did this during during the pandemic and I think they only had about three hundred people give feedback, thirty-seven of which are in our region. So we want to develop our own profile of a graduate, which we we do control. We don't, what we don't control locally, we don't control the learning standards when it comes to like the academics. We, there's a lot of other things, a lot of folks in our community care about when it comes to what else should kids have when they graduate high school. An example that if you go to the next, oh no, that's perfect. Thanks Jesse. The one of the ones that the state landed on was yeah, we want our kids to have academic success, but we also want them to master certain life skills and have self-agency. And underneath that, by self-agency, they're talking about initiative. Should we just assume that kids will have initiative just because they go to our schools, right? The other one, and I hear this all the time in our community, they they're saying, and this is based on the feedback, they did have people give feedback. Another thing that people said over and over, I've heard this in six districts now, they have understanding financial literacy. Right? It's it's one of those things that kids in our community, is it okay for us to give a child a diploma without understanding compound interest in the risk of credit cards and you know, and so on and so forth and investing and things like that. Again, not to ramble too much, but a target objective, just one of the many that we'll have is there, there is an interest for us to have our own profile. And we'll go, and the state has a good model as far as how do you, how do you build out your portrait or your profile? And it's through conversations with the community. What what do you want? What do you think our kids need? What do these students of ours need so that they can be successful when they leave us? And it's not just a high school problem. It's things that we can think about when kids enter our schools as preschoolers. If we want students to be able to communicate effectively and develop sound arguments, what does that mean for a preschool student, right? So anyhow, that's just a glimpse into one of the things that has come up that that some districts have. And and again, we're not bound by anything that's developed the state board of education level. But anyhow, I I think at each meeting, I'll give you a little update on some of the draft target objectives that we're looking at as well. All right, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you Superintendent Woodward. Moving on to agenda item eight point zero one, board reports and or comments.
Just to start off for a quick couple of things. One, Happy New Year, everybody, and hopefully if they had a good break, coming back, getting to some routines. Just wanted to remind our community to stay safe this week as we have high winds coming tonight. And snow in the forecast, Mr. Woodward, I just want you to know there's snow in the forecast. F Y I with cold weather, no, be safe out there on the roads and and all of that, stay warm possible, so.
Okay, this is more of just a reminder. So as Brenda said earlier, the legislative session has started today. It's a shorter session. I will be doing legislative day on the hill remotely this year, so I don't have to drive all the way down there and stay in a hotel, but I I can be here. So I will be giving you updates. I will be following transition to kindergarten. I've already looked at a pre-list of all of the things, all of all of the bills for both the Senate and the House and there are a lot of them. So we'll kind of see how they pair down. And if there, I can send you guys a list of what that looks like and if there are any that you're particularly interested in that you want me to follow up on, I can do that as well and make sure that those are top priority for us. But yeah, we'll see how this shakes out also. Go enjoy some sporting events. They are in full swing. Our student athletes are doing amazing. And it's a lot of fun. So I just encourage you to look up the schedule, go see what that is. I know that we've got a basketball game this Wednesday night that I'm going to try to be at amongst my own boys' basketball practices. So we'll see how that goes. But yeah, Happy New Year, everyone.
Nothing major for me. Just echo the same. Happy New Year and excited about the the big game.
Yep. Okay. Happy New Year. My kids were able to participate. We have great sports happening to Director Byrne's point. My kids were able to participate up at the high school in both the boys and girls' basketball camps. Those are really great. Shout out to the coaches and all of the students who helped put that on and facilities who also help facilitate that. Those were so much fun, so great, so many kids, I think. And so Jada's a fourth grader. There were over sixty girls between second and sixth grade in attendance and that was so neat to see that program grow. And then my boys had fun as well. And let's see, I think there was an email that came through for all of us about the Great Potato Bake Off. If you haven't done it before, please go do it, participate, very yummy potatoes. And our next board meeting, we're going to go ahead and go over board protocols again and kind of refresh for the for this upcoming year. And yeah, that's all I've got. It is five forty-three P M and tonight's meeting is adjourned.